Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Wednesday, February 13th. Please rise for a moment of silence. Will that the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein? Laughlin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Marone? Morganstein?
Here.
Chortel?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandry? Chairman Savoni?
Here. Councilors Marone, Fishbein, and Zandry did all advise me that they had other obligations that prevented their attendance tonight. Onto the consent agenda. Can we have a motion on all items not removed?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through H and O through R.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of those items on consent, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Onto item four. The items removed from the consent agenda, we will start with item three I. Can we have a motion, please?
I move we approve a transfer in the amount of $9,000 from distribution maintenance station expense to transmission operations for the electric division.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Good evening. If you could just remind us who you are for those in TV land?
Tony Bukary, General Manager of the Electric Division.
Tom Sullivan, Manager of the Business Office.
Rick Hendershot, Director of Public.
That was Mr. Hendershot outside the hearing of the microphone. What's going on here?
So this is, you know, we monitor our budget throughout the year and this, in this particular account, the resources have spent more time than normal on transmission switching. So we're just looking to appropriate funds from another line item that has, you know, dollars available to this account.
Okay. Counselor Morganstein, this was your move. Mayor?
Just, and the reason the money is in another account is because their labor is distributed across all accounts. So it's not spent from one account, it ends up unspent in another. So then they move it from where they were not assigned the personnel to the account where they are assigned.
Correct.
Just to explain why the money would be available elsewhere.
Well, that was, and I kind of, as I formulated my things, I kind of had, you had a few different items that were electric and so I kind of have consolidated in my mind a bit. So yeah, I'm hoping to a bit understand the movement of money account to account. All of it is Electric Division, but if someone could, and if it's you guys or if it's the mayor, to help me better understand why we have put money in one account at budget time and now we're using it from a different account and explain a bit to me how these accounts are kind of titled. Thank you, gentlemen.
Before, just before, Rick, it's a different process than general government?
I understand, yeah. But, and, and they're both difficult. Yours is different.
General government, the accounting is simpler. Your labor is labor and it's all labor. In utility, labor is spread among many accounts, be they operating or capital. Most of what we hear talk about this evening are operating accounts. And what happens is about this time every year, as the utilities put together budget, they are making educated guesses as to where people are going to spend their time in the year that starts July 1. So here we are about a year after we did our best effort to estimate where people would spend their time, and it turns out they spend their time doing something else. Needs change. Things need to be done that you didn't contemplate before. And there's close to a dozen labor accounts, or accounts with labor in them over which a person's, in particular here, these maintenance electricians, their time needs to be budgeted. And so they, every day they record where they spend their time, the costs that they incur by coming to work and being paid a wage is assigned to that account. And if more time was spent there than we estimated the year before, the account starts to run out of dollars. But then that means they weren't charging time to some other account. And so we have to move the money from that account where the dollars are into the account where the time is being spent, and we need your approval to do so.
Okay. All right. And so this item was specifically just that, but you had some other electrical items as well. I don't, we're gonna handle them all separately.
We, well, if you're satisfied with the explanation, we can consolidate items J, K, L, M, and N into another motion, similar to the consent motion.
So there, so there were some other accounts, and I guess if you can just maybe clarify each of those, name them for me, just to, if we could consolidate them and then...
You'll listen.
You could name them and I'll listen.
It's generally the same explanation for what were items three I through three M on what had been the consent agenda.
Right. So I gotta flip my page to see them. I have my notes of what I was asking you. Again, like I say, I laid them out a little differently, just as my mind was trying to cipher it all.
Now, I will make one distinction. What had been item three M, which is a budget appropriation as opposed to a transfer, that had to do with more money being required so we could continue to purchase an adequate, I'm sorry, so the electric division could continue to purchase an adequate amount of new lights for use as private lights for customers who request them and pay for them. We're burning through the inventory faster than we expected for two reasons. I think it's just a statistical glitch, but so far this year, the failure rate of the lights that are on private poles for private security light use are failing greater than they had historically. I don't think that'll continue. It's just the way, it's where the lights are failing at this moment as opposed to the general streetlights. Also, more customers are asking for new security lights than in the past, three times the rate that they were requesting similar lights last year. And so those two things have combined to cause us to begin to run low on funds in account, in the capital account 372, and that's why we're requesting the additional $28,000 so we can procure adequate inventory to get us through the rest of the year.
So the question that I had about those private lights, so that is not a lamp per se, but a light, like you say, so a private property owner requesting electric service?
They asked for a security light. We have a rate for this.
Tom?
So it is literally, it is literally a lamp?
Under our rate six, yes.
Okay.
Pretty lighting, parking lot lighting, that type of.
Okay. And so we have an increased need for that. So it's not necessarily that there's more people. It's not that we have more businesses coming that need more lights. It's just maybe some of that, but it's also more requests.
More requests?
It's more requests. I can speak to the cause.
Right. So it's the light itself, it's the putting the service to the light, and you also mentioned in it that we are now using LED lights for those lights. So are a lot of those going from old fashioned lights to now LED lights? Can we say that we are 100% using LED at this point?
No, not yet.
No.
This year has progressed at a higher rate than last year, but we still have more...
And is there a reason why we're not using 100% the energy?
Everything, excuse me, everything new is LED. There still is high pressure sodium lamps throughout town. They're being replaced as they fail with LEDs.
So we have to replace the entire fixture in order for it to have the LED light?
Correct.
And what percentage, if you know, of our lights at this point are not LED?
About two-thirds.
About two-thirds are old fashioned?
Correct.
And how do we think that we're faring in manpower to change those bulbs and...
We replace them as they fail.
So we, but we replace the entire pole if, or the entire fixture if the light goes out?
Correct.
So, so if I have a streetlight out here and it's been the old fashioned one and it burns out?
We replace it with...
And someone reports it, because sometimes it doesn't get known for a little bit. That was another issue people had for a while. We are 100% replacing it as they burn out? And if someone is, these private people asking for a new light, it is being put in with the new LED?
Correct.
And efficiency wise, we're gonna have better manpower costs because they need to be replaced less? And do we have a timeline that marches out of what that manpower, if we get to 100% LED lights, what your manpower needs become because you now have a 10-year bulb, I'm just throwing out a number, versus a two-year bulb? When we finally...
No, I don't expect that we'll need fewer linemen just because we now have LED lights.
And I wasn't sure we would, but I just thought it was a reasonable question to ask because that is part of a manpower thing. Okay, so an increase in activity, okay. All right. And did that cover all of our items, or we had still, that covered all of, because I have one other question of you gentlemen while I have you here. Do we have an update public or we as the council with our CMEC lawsuit, since I have you gentlemen?
That's not on the agenda. It's not...
But is that anything that we as a council could expect anytime soon, or I'm not allowed to ask that?
It's really out of order, given this is the, the nature of the item is what's been discussed.
I just, since I had them here, wanted to ask if that was something we could expect. Okay.
Any questions or, yeah, any question, other questions from the council? Any questions or comments from the public? All right. Madam Clerk, why don't you, well, all those in favor of item I, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, item I passes. Why don't we have a combined motion on items J through M?
I move we approve items three J through three M.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, those items passed. Now we have, can we have a motion on item three N?
I move we approve a bid waiver incorporating Emerson Incorporated elements into the SCADA system upgrade and replacement project at the Pistopog Water Treatment Plant at an approximate cost of 748,244 for the water division.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Good evening, gentlemen. I took a look at this before I decided to put it on consent, and I thought it was significant that with the bid waiver, you were looking at spending the 748,000 that was mentioned in the motion, whereas with a non proprietary system, you were looking at spending over 1.2 million dollars. Am I oversimplifying the math?
You are not.
Okay. Could you explain that to me? I mean, why does that make sense?
Sure. And that's certainly a question. Let me give you a little bit of a background here. When the Pistopog Water Treatment Plant was constructed in 1993, at that time, we put in a supervisory control and data acquisition system, otherwise known as SCADA. We are looking to repair, replace, and upgrade that system. We currently have engaged with a design consultant, and as we were going through the design specifications as well as the design drawings, we kind of came to a fork in the road. In 1993, we installed a Bristol-Baptcock system. They were subsequently bought out by Emerson. So Emerson is the legacy system we have at the Pistopog Water Treatment Plant. When we were looking at, again, the plans and specifications, we had two options. One was to continue with an Emerson system, or one was to use an open architecture system. And I honestly have the same question as you. The question is, is what's driving this difference? And I'm gonna refer to my notes here. The difference in the cost estimates is due to the level of software and principally programming that would be required. A non proprietary system would be starting from scratch, while the existing Emerson programs would be converted to the current programming language and then checked for errors. So basically, we, with the Emerson system, we essentially have a foundation there. We can build upon that foundation. If we were to go with a non proprietary open architecture system, we would be excavating for the foundation, putting the foundation in, and then building the house.
And you say that euphemistically?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Morganstein, your item.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, certainly on the surface we look and say, you're saving and you're using a system that you're happy with. And I just wanted to clarify, we are in the process of our phosphorus and our plant update, so this has nothing to do with that? This is a...
Correct. So the water division is completely separate from the sewer division. We're commonly referred to as the water and sewer divisions, but behind the scenes, we are two separate businesses with two separate accounts and two specific line items associated with each business.
Okay. And so...
And of course, these are separate facilities. I mean, this is at the water treatment plant. I suppose they're at the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So I guess some of the questions I had did not pertain then. Okay. But yeah, you've made that very clear, and it sounds like you're happy with your system, and I'm happy with that.
Correct. And, you know, as Counselor Savoni pointed out, is, you know, when there's, when there's a significant price difference between the two systems that will be driven down to our ratepayers, we feel it's prudent to ask.
Yeah. Yep. Great. Okay, gentlemen. Thank you so much.
Any questions from the public? Mr. Liu?
Thanks, Chairman. My name is Jared Liu, 59 Curtis Avenue. And my holistic question here is, what is the criteria for a bid waiver? In all the meetings I've been to, there are typically, you know, 10 or 20 items with bid waivers. They get passed through consent agenda, and I've never understood what the basic criteria is. And so this one, I certainly saw because of the dollar amount and, you know, wondered is there an immediacy to the problem? Like, we've got to get this done now because something's gonna catastrophically fail. Is it that there's an immediacy because the vendor's gonna go away and we're gonna save money if we do this now? Is it, I don't know. So I guess what is the criteria for bid waiver?
I would explain it to you by, by working backwards. So in our system, everything is to go to bid unless it's below, Mayor, what's the, is it 7,500 per year? Is that the bid threshold for, per vendor? 7,500.
7,500.
Yep. So anything above 7,500 in a budget year, per vendor, has to go out to bid. So if it's not going to go out to bid, you need a waiver and a reason for the waiver not to go out to bid. So this is an example of why we wouldn't go out to bid.
Sorry, maybe I misunderstood the agenda item. I thought this was to give a bid waiver, not, this is not going out to bid.
That's correct.
So why would we be waiving this bid? It's more than 7,500.
Because the investigation proved that we would save 500,000 by going with the proprietary system as opposed to going out to bid for the whole system where you're talking about 1.2 million dollars.
Isn't that precisely the purpose of the bid, is to either confirm the research that's been done, or to do the research essentially, to show, to give an opportunity for vendors to show?
Mr. Hendershot, I'll give it to you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we go out to bid, we have to specify the open architecture. We wouldn't be allowed to specify an Emerson system. That would be restricted. Purchasing ordinance and the purchasing agents would not, would not allow for that. So we would be in the 1.2 million range when the bids came back. Even if that estimate is off somewhat, it's not gonna make up the half a million dollar delta that is there by staying with the legacy system. But the only way to do so is to do it via a non competitive bidding process.
Right. And I totally appreciate that, and I have no reason to doubt the numbers. I just have never heard a criteria for what, what qualifies for a bid waiver. So, you know, it could be item B, bid waiver is given when the research has shown that we're gonna save, you know, more than certain, you know, percentage.
I, I don't think you can define it that way. I think each department, it's situational. It depends on what the service is, what the item is, what the benefit is to going with, in this case, the legacy provider. I mean, we, we've looked at the police radio system, and there was a benefit to staying with Motorola, and it was, it was based upon the criteria in front of us at the time. So it's unique to the situation.
I think we certainly understand, or we agree with one another about, you know, sort of what the agenda item is, and I think just disagree about whether something should go to bid. So I'll leave it at that. I mean, I think I've made the point that I wanted to make, and I appreciate your time.
Certainly. Any other questions or comments from the public? If not, then, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Laughlin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Yes, it does. And while I have you two here at the table, I'm gonna jump ahead on the agenda to item 10, if we could have a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into contracts with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and sign said contracts on behalf of the town of Wallingford. The mayor is further authorized to provide such additional information and execute such other documents as may be required by the state or federal government in connection with said contracts, and to execute any amendments, recisions, and revisions thereto to obtain clean water fund financing for the water pollution abatement facilities.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please tell us what's going on here.
It's a long one.
Okay. So on March 14th, 2017, I was here with the former director of Public Utilities, George Adair. At that time, we asked for a qualifications-based selection to undertake a facility plan for the wastewater pollution control facility. So this was a, a study to look at the current as well as look forward 20 years for our operations, our equipment, our flow volume, as well as our flow loadings. So because the town used a qualifications-based selection system, or QBS, to select our engineering consultant to perform the facility plan, the town is now eligible to receive a 55% grant towards those monies expended by the sewer division. So we are here this evening simply for the resolution, which is standard DEEP language, to submit with our grant application regarding the facility plan only. I'll point out that any funding, be it a grant or the loan for the construction of the wastewater pollution control facility, will come later. This is simply dealing with the facility plan. So the facility plan cost 966,862.14. Applying the 55% planning grant rate is equal to 531,774.18.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes, this obviously, or maybe not obviously, but I'll make it clear, it does deal with the phosphorus mandate. And we are proceeding to qualify for any grants, but we likewise are continuing to evaluate and analyze other courses of action, given the high cost that this program will visit upon customers of our, of our sewer wastewater treatment program. And as you've heard me say, those costs for the average will be 140 to 150 for residential user. And for businesses, a large user could approach 4,000 increase in order to fund the 50%. So it's a 52 million dollar cost estimated right now. We will receive a 50% funding, but that will leave us 32 million, which obviously the math doesn't quite work out exactly at 50%, but we will be funding through our rates, 32 million. And that results in the 140 to 150 dollar cost per residential user for a period of time that over, over at least, what, 20 years?
It's a 20-year, 2% loan.
So over 20 years. So it's, I think it's a major concern. It's a significant amount of money, and we have to protect the people in town as best we can, and that's the other side of this. But we certainly are looking to qualify for whatever money the state may make available.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Morganstein?
So I'd understand that this that we're looking for is not the fact that you're still fighting the facts of phosphorus emissions being necessary. We're talking about two different things, correct? We're...
Correct. So this is, so this is the facility plan.
Right.
So we have undertaken the facility plan. The facility plan has been submitted to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. It was approved on January 25, 2019.
So, so the, I just want to be absolutely clear and make sure that the people at home understand as well. So the 86 million dollar water pollution control facility project, part of which is the phosphorus, 55.7 million, and then the 30.8 second phase, that money, some of which is upkeep that we haven't done in many years, is, there's the whole thing that you're still having the argument about whether algae bloom and phosphorus and all these things that are accepted science and all the other towns in the state have dealt with are, are being, as you believe, forced down our throat and costing us money. This is not that.
Yes, it is. They're one and the same.
Well, it's the same project, but what you're asking us to approve...
Is, is the facility plan. It is the, it is the overall study from which we developed the phosphorus as well as future replacements, repairs, and upgrades at the water pollution control facility.
Which includes the fact that we don't believe we need to do the phosphorus control?
It includes the concern that the, the, the cost of it, it will be a significant detriment to the community.
So if we approve, what we're being asked to approve would be saying, you're charging us too much money. You're, you're making requirements on us that we don't agree on.
No, it's going forward with the plan. We're, we're still, we're staying on track so that we can qualify for all the funding that's available to subsidize.
Yeah, let me make a, a high level point, the only kind I can. Mr. Amway, you know, knows all the details of this, but the bottom line is, the study's done, that money's been spent. We paid for the study. This process that, you know, that we're asking the council endorse so that the mayor can execute the attached document is so that we may complete applying for reimbursement for 55% of that money. Whether or not a penny of phosphorus work gets done or not has no bearing on the fact that the plan is eligible for this 55% reimbursement, so long as we follow all the procedures, you know, in obtaining said reimbursement. And that's why we're here this evening, is to get this body's endorsement so that the mayor may properly execute these documents in the eyes of DEEP, and then we can, the sewer division can receive a 55% reimbursement on funds already spent.
Okay. So that clarifies for me that... Okay, so that clarifies for me that if I'm saying yes to this, I'm not saying I agree with the fact that the town is still, in some level, somewhere else, fighting the fact of believing in phosphorus remittance or not?
That's correct.
I don't agree, I don't agree with your characterization of it, but certainly.
It's my understanding of it. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Leturno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The clean water fund that the, that we're going to get reimbursed from, is that a, a state program or is that a federal program?
It's federal dollars that is, that is managed by the state.
Okay, okay. And the balance, the remaining balance of $435,087.96, would that be eligible for any other type of grant to get some more money back, or?
Not that I'm aware of, no, no.
All right, so that's pretty much what we're on the hook for.
Correct, and we've, we've budgeted for it, and we've already paid it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anything else from the council? Any questions or comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Yes.
Leturno?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
He said yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Onto item five, the public question and answer period. Anyone for the public question and answer period? Looks like Mr. Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had two other questions. So the first one, I don't know if it's coming up, but I just noticed that the police union contract was on the agenda or in the paperwork for tonight, but it was dated July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021. Does that mean we've been negotiating this for the last, well, by the time it passes, perhaps about the last year?
It's on the agenda for consideration tonight. It'll be discussed in a few minutes, and I believe the negotiations started before the expiration of the last contract, so sometime last spring.
Is that pretty typical, that union contracts take that long for the town to negotiate?
Very typical. In fact, you're going to see there's a board of education contract that took a similar period of time to negotiate.
Do we factor that into the timeline? So, for example, if we look back and see that it takes six months, that we roll back when we start the contract negotiations by six months, or whatever the timeframe is, so that we land on time and not have to do it retroactively?
Council does not play a role in deciding when negotiations commence, it's an administrative role.
But, gee, I mean, that's a question that you've asked.
Oh, sure.
And the answer is no?
It's an administrative role. It's up to the management and the union to get together and discuss the contracts. We merely ratify, or, or not.
So it's not a question that you ask?
No, it's not.
Thank you. All right, the other item was, it passed on the consent agenda. There was a Record Journal story, July 2nd, 2018, about a former Ku Klux Klan leader, senior vice commander, second highest ranking member at the Wallingford VFW, named Scott Palmer. He was condemned by the US Army for his hate speech by the Connecticut NAACP, who called it appalling that the VFW was standing by Mr. Palmer. In that story, the town government's veteran service officer, George Messier, was quoted as saying, quote, "He wasn't aware of Palmer's comment on social media, and he'd like to keep it that way." I just wondered to the town council, before we accept a donation from this person, who, at least if he's quoted correctly in the Record Journal, do we want to go back to him to ask him to clarify his statement? Because it seems like he's kind of turning a blind eye, as opposed to as a representative of the town, taking a firm stance on hate speech.
So, item 3E was the acceptance of the donation of a desk from Mr. Messier. This was a piece of furniture that was Mr. Messier's personal item, and he donated it to a town department that could use a desk. I, I don't know that, that any of us see a need to ask him about something he said in the Record Journal that doesn't necessarily bear further explanation if he's going to give a town department a desk.
So he's a representative of the town, we are accepting a donation from him, it seems like then would have been the moment to ask, as a representative of the town, to clarify his statement? Now seems like a second time to ask.
I, you're entitled to your opinion.
I suppose, I just want to clarify then, I mean, you would take a strong stance against hate speech?
I absolutely would.
Do you feel that not asking him to clarify as a town administrator, or a representative of the town, excuse me, is a strong stance against hate speech?
I don't think there was anything about his quote that stood as, as, as acceptance of hate speech. It seemed to me that he made a negative reference to the hate speech, first of all. And second of all, I'm not sure that I see the relationship between something he said in the paper a year ago and his donating a piece of furniture to a town department.
I just want to be clear, I'm not accusing him of anything, I'm asking that, we simply ask him to clarify his statement, because what he said, which you're exactly correct is, it's sort of a double negative, which is, "I don't want to know." It's not, "I have no comment," it's, "I don't want to know." I think we should ask him. He's a representative of the town government.
I'm sure you could call his department tomorrow and you can ask him.
All right, well, I was asking you for a leadership position, so we understand each other.
Any other public comment? There being none, I close the public question and answer period, and I move on to item number six, which is discussion and possible action regarding a police contract tentative agreement with ASME Council 4, Local 1570, for three years, from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2021.
Good evening, Jim Hutt, Town Human Resources Director.
William Wright, Chief of Police.
Good evening, thank you for being here, and if you could give us a summary of this agreement, I'd be grateful.
Yes, we're here tonight to seek your approval on a three-year contract between the town and ASME Council 4, Local 1570 of the Wallingford Police Department. The contract is a, a three-year duration until June 30th, 2021, and it calls for three increases of pay, 1.75 in year one, 2.0 in year two, and 1.85% in year three. There's also wage adjustments being requested for the different ranks in the police department spread out over a two-year period. The reason for that is, we did a comparative study of some local police departments contiguous to the town of Wallingford and, similar to, similar to the town of Wallingford, and found that our wages were below the average, and, as you know, police officers, and, you know, the recruitment and selection is a very competitive business, and so we wanted to remain competitive with our counterparts, and also to look at promotional opportunities for sergeants and lieutenants. We wanted to create a wage structure that was conducive for promotion to those ranks. We're also effective July 1, 2019. We are going to be introducing the HSA, the High Deductible Health Plan. HSA is the core plan, with a 50% town contribution, several plan design changes to health insurance that'll be effective upon ratification, and we also clarified the length of the probationary period. One of the strategies that we've employed is, to meet the demand for labor, we've instituted a recruitment program for individuals that are already sworn officers in the state of Connecticut, and as a result of that, we negotiated with the union to reduce the probationary period for those employees from two years to one, because we're already certified officers. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Counselor Chertel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you both for being here. Just a very quick question about Counselor Fishbine's favorite topic. He's not here tonight, but I just figured I would ask. The Janus language, I'm assuming this is, this contract now has that language woven in, because I'm looking at Article 3, Section 1, and now there's new verbiage that talks about the deduction for union dues is based upon authorization, so I'm assuming this is what that, he's always asking about, and?
That's correct, yeah. This is, this is, you know, the town proposed and the union had agreed to language, to, to amend the union security provision. There's no longer a provision to collect the agency fees from employees that do not want to be union members, so we did straighten that language out.
Do you think, looking ahead to other contracts, that we can expect to now see this language in every contract, or is it basically subject to a negotiation-by-negotiation thing? I mean?
It's, it's going to be on an individual basis, I think, you know, depending on the bargaining unit. Everybody knows what the Janus language says. When you open that door to negotiations, you know, one of the things that I've found in negotiations is that, in exchange for eliminating the agency fee language, which is no longer legal, the unions want to have more face time on town time with their bargaining unit members, and we're not going to permit that, but it's still, whenever you open up a topic for discussion and for negotiations, it's going to be a process of give and take.
Even on something that's illegal? I mean, I, I hear, I know what you're saying, it just feels like, if this went to arbitration, I don't, I don't know how they expect to get something back for removal of language that's illegal, that the Supreme Court, you know what I mean? I, I don't know.
Well, their, unions understand the language is not legal, but that doesn't prevent them from wanting to negotiate with the town to allow them to meet with employees on town time. So, you know, that's the language that is being proposed from the unions, and the town has resisted that language.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions from the council? Questions from the public? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Leturno?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion at this time that we accept this bargaining agreement between the town of Wallingford and the Wallingford Police Union, Local 1570, Council 4, ASME, AFL-CIO.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Yes.
Leturno?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chertel? I apologize. Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Very much.
Onto item seven, discussion and possible action regarding UE Local 222, CILU, CIPU, and its sub-local, CILU number 75, affiliated with the United Electrical, Radio, and Machine Workers of America, UE Paraeducators, Wallingford Board of Education. Please come on up. Good evening.
Good evening.
Tell us about this bargaining unit.
Sure.
Would you want us to introduce ourselves?
Please do that first.
You like that, huh, Chris?
Good evening, Danielle Bellisi, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Wallingford Public Schools.
Roxanne McKay, Chair Board of Ed.
So in front of us tonight, we have the paraprofessional summary and contract. This, this has 180 members in it. It is a three-year contract. It goes from July 1 of 2018 to June 30 of 2021. The wages that we had agreed on were in the first year for 1819, a 2.0% increase with no step movement, effective and retroactive to July 1 of 2018. In the second year, the 1920 year, a GWI increase of 1.99% with no step movement, and in the third year, 2020, 20 to 2021, GWI increase of 1.75% with a step movement. Moving on, I put in the summary you have in front of you, some information about the insurance. Really, this stays the same as the current contract now. Just wanted to highlight that the HSA plan will be the core plan moving forward. We did add health reimbursement account language for the employees, basically just saying that this reimbursement account is available for any actively employed employees who precluded from participating in the HSA account because they received Medicare and/or veteran benefits. We also included in this plan the excise tax language, basically stating that if the board reasonably determines that the cost of the group health insurance plan or plans offered under this contract trigger an excise tax, that we have an opportunity then with the union and the board to go back and engage in midterm negotiations. Moving on to the Janus language, we did make some changes to this section, so in Section 13, Section 1 stayed the same, but under Section 2, we added union dues or voluntary agency fees. So they shall be deducted from the paycheck of each of these employees who signs and remits to the board an authorization form. So we made it voluntary, we added that language there. We eliminated Section 3 and Section 4 there, and then when we renumbered it, the new Section 5, we also included there that the amount of the dues or voluntary agency fees be deducted under this article. So those were the changes our attorney had suggested to make sure we meet that.
I know, we just add, I think it was one of the counselors had asked the question about a Janus language being added. We've pretty much, as we've been bringing forward to you, any contracts, the Janus language has been in our contracts, we've been managing to get it into each of them, so that's, we've been committed to that.
Thank you. We'll continue that with the next ones we have coming up for negotiations. Underneath the Section 5 for vacancies, some of the things coming up here were just adding and changing some of the language, kind of cleaning up some of it. Under the vacancy section, we changed it from calendar days to business days, so it would be five business days, and we just clarified, for the purposes of this section, that business days means when the district's offices are open. Same thing underneath the voluntary transfers, we cleaned up the language there to remove the word "normally." It said, previously, it said the board would normally consider transfers, we took that word "normally" out, and just said that we would consider transfer requests with, made within the current school year. We also added a probationary employee section. So under this section, the language just says that no probationary employee shall apply for a transfer or vacancy opening during the employee's probationary period unless no qualified applicant from within the bargaining unit has applied or has been selected for the position. Moving on to the Section 6 of their working hours, we clarified in Section 1, we added language that the employee shall be compensated at their regular hourly rate, when required by administration to work during such activities. We were finding that sometimes they were working later, depending on what activity they were helping out in, out of their control, so we wanted to make sure that they were compensated for that. And then we added in Section 6, that administration shall make reasonable efforts to give advanced notice of assignments to employees before the beginning of the school year, whenever possible. So just wanted to clarify on our end as well, consistency in notifying where they will be. Moving on to the displacement employee section, here we just clarified that any employee that is displaced or laid off will receive their notice via an email sent by the administration one, one week prior to being displaced. We did later on, further down in that paragraph, clarify for them that displaced employees will be notified via the district email of a real cal, reallocation meeting 10 business days in advance of the meeting, and that if they are displaced and unable to attend the meeting and cannot participate via phone, that the union president or other designated union representative will choose the vacant bargaining unit position for that displaced employee. Moving on to sick leave in Section 15, we just also hear a- of it's approved unpaid leave for religious obligations. Down in Section 4, under where, under where we have a section here that talks about medical notes, where we can request one from the employee if they're absent, we just clarified and added here that we can ask for, upon request, for an instance of absences consisting of four or more intermittent days in a four-week period. And lastly, we took a look at the bereavement section and we just added in son-in-law and daughter-in-law to be included in the definition of immediate family. So it's a little more clear moving forward.
Thank you. I thought it was noteworthy that when it came to the first two years of general wage increase, that this bargaining unit agreed for both of those first two years to forego their step increases.
Yes.
I think that's an accomplishment.
Thank you. Thank you.
Questions from the council? Counselor Chertel?
Whoa, hi.
Hey, Chris.
The nice job of the contract. I'm just going to raise the same thing I raised with the last one because I think it's incorrect. On page 18 in the chart for the insurance, it lists the co-insurance maximum at $3,000 for in-network, and $6,000, actually, it's combined in-network, out-of-network, $3,000, I'm assuming for individual, $6,000 for a family. But again, if you look at the way it's structured, your deductible's $2,000, you hit that, you have 0% co-insurance.
Okay.
You, it's impossible to hit unless you went out of network for everything, which I guess every hospital's in-network, I mean, the network's huge. I don't know how you hit that $3,000. So I, I don't, I just think it's wrong.
Okay.
I think it's a typo. I don't know if it's a typo. I don't know if, if, I don't know. Maybe it's purposely like this because maybe someday you want to change the 0% and it's going to be a negotiating thing.
Okay. I can go back and talk to our attorney about it.
Yeah, I would just ask.
Because they didn't, they didn't change, make any changes to this particular.
Right. So that's the only thing I don't.
We'll check it.
Need to be a broken record.
That's okay.
On this one thing, but just the math doesn't work on that. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Leturno?
So will this have to come back in front of us with, to be able to allow time to check? I mean, how do we do that?
It's actually, it's language that's currently in the contract.
It's currently in there now, yeah.
We didn't. Not new language.
It's not new at all. So this was something that was there.
So there's really no corrections you can make?
No.
Okay.
But I do, I will get clarification though, as to your question. And for going to the...
If you could get that through the council office to us, I'd appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this agreement between the Town of Wallingford Board of Education and UE Local 222 CILU, CIPU, and its sub-local CILU Number 75 affiliated with the United Electrical, Radio, and Machine Workers of America, UE Para-educators.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any comment from the public? There being none, I bring it back to the council if there's any discussion on the motion. There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Laffin?
Yes.
Leturno?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto Item 8, which is to hold a public hearing to discuss the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program application, the final outcome of the 2016 Community Development Block Grant, and the final outcome of the 2017 Community Development Block Grant. If you could come up to the table and identify yourselves, we'll start from there.
Hi, I'm Susan Schott, Administrative Grant Secretary for the Town of Wallingford.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly McDermott. I'm the Director of the Housing Authority.
Good evening. My name is Peter Huckins, from Community Consulting, a consultant that was hired to write.
If you could, I think you're not being picked up by the record. So if you could just repeat that, thank you.
My name is Peter Huckins of Community Consulting, hired to write and implement, if awarded, the 2019 Small Cities Grant for improvements to John Savage Commons.
Thank you. So what I'm going to ask is that before I ask for public input pursuant to the public hearing, that you go through the three items that we're covering tonight and give a summary presentation on each so that the public knows what they're commenting on.
Okay, you want to start with the 2019?
Sure. Thank you all again for the opportunity to come and speak this evening. The Town Council in Town of Wallingford has been generous in their support of these applications with the Housing Authority for a number of years. And so tonight, the first item we're here for is your support on a 2019 grant application to the Department of Housing at the state of Connecticut that will allow us to complete certain renovations at one of our properties called John Savage Commons. Just to really quickly give you a summary, the Housing Authority provides 317 units of housing in this community to individuals who are at low or moderate income households. More specifically, 155 of those units are for elderly disabled individuals in this community. And John Savage is, represents 35 of those units, to give you a little bit of background on who we are and what we do. John Savage was built in 1992. We provide, like I said, 35 units of housing to elderly disabled residents. And it's a unique population to work with that have certain needs for life safety, accessibility, and also just in general, quality of living. We promote trying to keep individuals at home as long as they possibly can stay at home. To rent a unit at John Savage, you would pay what's called a minimum rent that can be anywhere from $500 to $700, depending on your income. And so we see a range of, of different rents at that property. This Small Cities Grant application is really important because it helps preserve the physical capital buildings that exist on that site. What's really important to recognize is not only can we provide affordable units in, in our community for individuals that may need them, and this resource helps us continue to do that, but this property, built in 1992, has reached its useful life for all of the components that we're about to talk about. It's a very well-maintained community, but unfortunately, when a roof has reached its age, it has reached its age. And so some of those components that we are looking at applying for funding for include a full roof replacement at that site, masonry and siding repairs that include cleaning and painting the property, completing a window replacement at every unit, and most importantly, completing ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act renovations to the community room, as well as four units at that property. That's a, that's a good overview for the project.
So that's, that's the first of the three elements?
That's the 2019 grant application.
Tell us what happened with the 2016 grant.
Certainly. So Maguire Court is another one of our properties. It's located up near Rock Hill School, off of Old Durham Road. It's 50 units, also of elderly disabled housing. It's tucked into this cute little neighborhood at the end of a street, and it has bus service to it, and it's just a really quiet neighborhood up, up there. And in 2016, we came forward to the town to support a roof replacement as well at that particular property. It was built in the early 70s, 1972, and what had ended up happening is that property had multiple layers of roof on it, and then after time, that just really failed. And so we were able to complete in 2016, a full roof replacement at the site, an upgrade to the fire alarm system, which at that time, it's hard to believe in 2016, it was still a localized alarm system. And so what would happen is that your, your smoke detector would go out from your house, but only the building would ring. And so when the fire department would show up on site, they didn't know what unit to go to. And sometimes you didn't know what building to go to just because of the age of that system. And so we used 2016 funding to, to upgrade that system, to bring it into where it needs to be. And, and it's an amazing system, and each unit rings individually now. In fact, the fire department can tell if it was a heat sensor or a smoke sensor, if it was in the kitchen, if it was in the bedroom. It's an excellent system. At that same time, because of where Maguire Court is located, electric service can sometimes go out, and sometimes when that happens, it takes a couple days to bring it back on. And we have residents who are on oxygen or who are ambulatory, who need certain medical equipment to run, and we installed a generator when in those emergency situations, you know, I'm talking about like a microburst or like the tornado or some event that takes place, which seems to be happening more, for whatever reason, they can go to the community room and make sure that their oxygen is still available or charge those devices so that they can be safe at home while that happens. So that was a critical life safety enhancement in 2016. And then the third component of the 2016 grant included a complete renovation to the sidewalk system at that property. If you've been to Maguire, it's on two tiers, and so some units are really high, and you either access them through stairs or some sort of ramp, and the other units are low, and from the parking area, you can access them. And so the sidewalk reconfiguration included an ADA accessible ramp, so the folks that were living at the top could get there safely. It also sort of took the sidewalk network and made it make more sense based on where parking is on the property. And it was a really great enhancement to have that for folks who have mobility issues at our property. So that was, that was 2016.
And 2017?
2017 is at the same property, Maguire Court. We always looked at Maguire Court as a two-phase project because of the amount of work that that site needed. And so in the 2017 grant, we did a full renovation of the unit bathrooms at that property, and eliminated tubs, replaced them with walk-in showers, and added ADA features in those bathrooms to each, to each unit, which really enhanced quality of living for our residents. And at the same time, we were able to leverage that 2017 grant with another funding source the state of Connecticut had, and brought another 1.2 million to Maguire Court through that funding source. And so in tandem with the bathroom renovation project, currently, if you went to Maguire, you would find that the windows are going to be replaced, the flooring is going to be renovated, also the kitchens, and then finally, the exterior doorways. And so at the end of 2019, Maguire Court will be 100% renovated to modern accessibility standards, which is excellent.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll go, we'll go to the public. Is there any public comment on this application or item? I think I've given sufficient time. There being none, I will close the public hearing and we will move on to...
Can I, can I just add one statement? I have to make a couple statements specific to the requirements of the grant, and I know Susan has those statements, and so I, I just want to defer to her for those. But I would like to say that my residents at John Savage Commons, a couple of them had called me this evening. I, I didn't say this earlier because I was just describing the nature of that, of the 2019 application. But due to the time of evening and their access to transportation, many of them were not able to make it tonight. I do have a community meeting scheduled for tomorrow with them, and if the council's interested, I'm happy to forward their comments and feedback to you as well, if you would like to hear how they feel about that project. But I, I want you to know that our residents are, are in support of this. They're excited about it, about the opportunity, and they're just really sorry they weren't able to be here at the public hearing.
Thank you. You can certainly forward whatever comments they have to the council office, and they will be distributed to us.
Also, Chairman, I do need to add, and this is a requirement of the Department of Housing, that the Town of Wallingford does not have...
If you could get closer to the microphone, that would be great.
This needs to be added per the Town, Department of Housing requirements, a statement just stating, stating that the Town of Wallingford does not have any program income. We never have, and I'm sure we, we will never have it in the future. Funding from this grant application for 2019 will not generate any program income, and the Town of Wallingford is obligated to discuss this as part of the public hearing. But it does need to be stated. We, we do not do housing rehabs, and we do not do or use program income in this, in this grant.
Okay. Are there any other preconditions before we can move the item?
No.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to Item 9 for a motion.
Does that need to be?
Excuse me. Does that need to be said in my motion? Or, I'll, hopefully I wrote it down right. Let me know if I didn't. I move, we approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to file for a Small Cities Community Development Grant Program for 2019, not to exceed $1.5 million, and to provide additional information to execute other documents as may be required to execute the program, to execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for state financial assistance if offered, to execute other amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto, to carry out approved activities, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of Wallingford. The Town of Wallingford does not have or include any program income funding, and this budget will not be used for program income funding.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the council on the motion? There being none, we've already held a public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Laffin?
Yes.
Leturno?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Excuse me, yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your participation, for your management of this program. It's important stuff.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mayor, do you have anything for Item 11? With that said, there being no further business on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Leturno, seconded by Chertel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, I declare this meeting adjourned.